Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Yanis.
Here.
Mrs. Zearco.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin by reminding everyone that city offices will be closed on Friday, December 17th, so that's a week from this upcoming Friday, for an in-service training day for staff. Closures include City Hall, Public Library, Community Center, Nature Center, Senior Center, DPW Recycling, and 41A District Court. The closure will not affect the city's refuse schedule, however, so trash will be collected on the normal days, so please take note of that. Of course, 90% plus of City Hall transactions can now be done online, so we do encourage individuals to go to our at-home services on our website if you want to process a permit, pay bills, or anything of the sort. There's a long list of services provided online. And also, I wanted to remind everyone that this is the last week for leaf collection, so if you have a Thursday and Friday collection, you still have a couple days to get your leaves collected. Looks like we have very good compliance throughout the community, so a special thank you to all the residents who have taken note of the leaf collection requirements and did their job to get them all collected or mulched. And also, we have a closed session this evening at the conclusion of tonight's agenda. I'm requesting that the City Council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act for Council to consult with the city attorney regarding a confidential written legal opinion. And before I introduce the police chief for a very important update this evening, I wanted to remind the community that tomorrow at our ice rink is cocoa, or cocoa with core, which is free ice skating for residents, so you can get a cup of cocoa and skate with our officers. And that is from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, December 8th, 6:00 to 9:00 at our ice rink, so there's no charge, and it'll be a fun night, and our officers always like doing this, so we'll look forward to seeing everyone out there. If you haven't noticed, the ice rink has been really popular since it opened on December 1. Really cool to see, especially at Sterling Christmas last Saturday. The ice rink was jam-packed, so really nice to see. And at this time, Mayor, I'd like to introduce our police chief, Dale Jawojakowski, who's going to talk about many of the security initiatives and efforts that have been developed over recent years in our school systems. Obviously, in light of the tragedy that happened a couple weeks ago, we thought it was very important that the community know all that's being done in Sterling Heights to protect students, not only in our high schools, in our public schools, but also our private schools, houses of worship, and the like. So at this point, I'm pleased to introduce our police chief, Dale Jawojakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool, Mayor Taylor, members of Council. Yeah, last week was tragic. The entire state, the entire area, is asking questions about, you know, why did this happen? How did this happen? And I think it's a great time for reflection here in Sterling Heights, and as elected leaders of our city, I want you to know that Sterling Heights is prepared with our training, equipment, personnel, and prevention strategies, and I thought it would be an appropriate time to go over those things. And then, at the end of the conversation, talk about what could be done to make things safer for everybody. But with that being said, let's get into the training. We've been doing training for years. This last training here, the picture you see, this is at Stevenson High School. This was in 2019, and this is an interesting picture. You can see a couple guys in the mid, to the right, have red vests on. Those are ballistic vests. Those are firefighters. So we're one of the first agencies here in Macomb County to have a rapid response team to have firefighters be able to go into an active assailant situation and go to a warm zone and remove people that are injured, shot, and be safe. So they have ballistic helmets, they have ballistic-rated vests, and they train hand-in-hand with all of our police officers, as you can see in that picture. Every single police officer and command officer went through this training in the summer of 2019 at Stevenson, so it's great having that partnership with the school district and do real-life training in the schools. Again, a couple of our training instructors, Officer Pollock and Officer Dam, who do a phenomenal job with all of this training and have been for years. Again, Stevenson High School, real-life training. We use a gun called the simunition gun. It is a real handgun that shoots a real, live round. The round has a paint tip on the end of it instead of a lead bullet end, and it hurts. It is about as real as it gets, and when it hits you, it leaves a paint mark. You do not want to get hit by this thing, but again, it really raises the level of training and the reality of what these officers have to deal with. This was at the Career Prep Center in Warren Consolidated Schools. Again, we had dozens and dozens of police officers go through their active shooter situation. Again, you can see the firefighters to the left with the red vests on, and our officers going through different scenarios and drills, recovering victims, removing them from the building. Again, our partnership with Warren Consolidated Schools and Utica Schools is strong. I was just on the phone with the Warren Consolidated Superintendent tonight, yesterday with Utica Schools Superintendent. It's every day, every single thing that happens, we're in total communication. This is Sergeant Akeem doing a ton of training with Officer Pollock, with our Utica School teachers. This is all through 2018 and 2019, a lot of those training sessions for active shooter. This was a town hall that we held at Henry Ford High School. We had hundreds of parents come out. This is just after the Parkland shooting, talking about improvements to school safety and what we're doing as a police department and as a school district. This is Officer Pollock and Sergeant Akeem at Lakeside Mall with all of their employees and management, doing active assailant training. Again, our entire training staff out at Bethesda Christian Church, hundreds of people at this event, talking about an active shooter situation at a house of worship. So our training guys have been out there in businesses, churches, schools, done a phenomenal job. Sergeant Akeem, Officer Dam, Officer Pollock are really experts in this field. They've went around, taught this. They know what they're doing, they know what they're talking about, and we're lucky to have them. And Captain...
(laughing).
Captain Pappas.
Captain.
Who runs that unit. Yeah, again, it's getting that support from everybody, making sure they know they have the money, the training dollars, to do all this stuff. So I appreciate it. So a little bit more on our training. Since 2015, citywide employee active killer training presentations, as you know, some of you in Council, we did some active shooter training here, most recent 2018 with the Sterling Heights Library. Again, in 2015, they presented to 20 to 25 different businesses and churches throughout the city. In 2018, 2019, extensive training with Utica Community Schools, teachers and staff. And Warren Consolidated Schools, if you ask, wonder why we don't do as much with Warren Consolidated Schools? The Warren Police Department tends to do a lot of the hands-on stuff with Warren Consolidated Schools. We do more so with Utica, but obviously, the second Warren asked us, we would do it, but that's just the way it's been for years, and it works well. Our rescue task force, that's the firefighter program, again, they have them ballistic vests and helmets, started in 2016 with annual training with our guys. All Sterling Heights officers and command officers trained in 2019 in active assailant training. Our special response team trains every single month to active assailants, a very well-trained SRT team. The patrol rifle program, they train on a semi-annual basis to active assailants, and we just recently added 40 new members to that program. And these are patrol officers who carry a patrol rifle in their car every single day. We thank Council and the city for purchasing those weapons, and an innovative program. The officers actually purchase the weapons over time through payroll deduction, which takes some of the sting out of the cost. So the city funds the money, the officers pay off the loan, and everybody's happy. The city's happy, the officers are happy, and we have a lot of officers with a patrol rifle in their car. And the important thing with that is they can respond immediately. And on the road, on a typical day, if I have 15 guys out there, six or seven of them have patrol rifles in their cars. They can respond immediately. We don't have to wait for a SWAT team. The days of, you know, cordoning off the area and waiting for the SWAT team to approach, you don't have that time. You immediately show up, you go into the building. So again, the patrol rifle program has been fantastic. I myself, I meet quarterly with Utica Schools and Warren Consolidated Schools with their security staff, constantly in communication with them, with security, everything from their, when they redid all of their buildings to add secure entrances, to different security, safety features within the school. I meet with the superintendents on a regular and ongoing basis. If you didn't know this, every single camera within Utica Schools and Warren Consolidated Schools is now patched right into our police department at our front desk. The officers are trained to pull up that camera system, and you name the school, they can pull up the menu, click on the school, and then pull up every camera in the school, which really helps our officers that are there on scene to get real intel, live intel of exactly what's going on and who's in that building. So that's been a huge upgrade for us. Upcoming training that we have, active shooter presentations coming up here at the Caldean Community Foundation on December 15th, which was already scheduled before the shooting even happened. Again, refresher training at Henry Ford High School with teachers and staff that was already scheduled as well before this last incident in Oxford. And we're working with the North American Active Assailant Conference to possibly host a high-risk Unified Commander Course here at SHPD. So the story is, we've been doing this year after year after year, and just to be ready in case of a tragedy. As far as equipment goes, Captain Pappas was instrumental in establishing this Department of Justice grant and Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association grant, so he's been great at getting us some grant monies. And in this case, that grant money went to what we call a go-bag. And if you see that picture on the left, it's a smaller backpack. Inside the backpack, we have a tool. This one's made by Stanley, can pry open doors, windows, break glass. We have zip cuffs in there, and we have a medical bag with tourniquets, blood clotting, and everything you need for a trauma-type situation. That's in the go-bag. That go-bag is located in every single marked and unmarked car that we have. Captain Pappas, again, was able to get us a Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant and using federal drug forfeiture funds. This is a special vest. Officers are mandated to wear regular ballistic vests. This vest goes on top of that vest. This vest will stop a rifle round. So this vest goes in that bag, and it's stored in the officer's car, and in case there is someone with a high-powered weapon or a rifle, that is an extra layer of protection for our officers. And again, through Captain Pappas's efforts, we're able to secure all this and get this in every single car in the city. And with our current budget, Council, thank you very much, we were able to upgrade our current helmets that we had that had no ballistic qualities to ballistic-rated helmets. These will stop some rounds of ammunition, not everything, but it's better than our old helmets, so I appreciate that, and we got these coming in. Half of them just came in. Our next budget year, we're getting the second half, so upgrading our helmets, that's a big thing for our officers. And then, personnel, if you remember this day, we finally were able to secure a school resource officer in all three of our high schools here in Sterling Heights. We only had one in Sterling Heights High School for many years, then Henry Ford and Stevenson came on board. We do a cost-sharing program with the school district. We pick up half the cost, and the school district picks up on the other. This was a big day for Sterling Heights to have officers dedicated in the school full-time. So again, we've been doing the training, putting the right people in the right place in order to respond when called, but the bigger question is, what can you do to prevent officers from having to respond? This is the difficult question. So having the tools and the training, yes, we are doing all that, but the question is, this can still happen, and how can you stop it? Metal detectors are one thing, but that's still not going to stop it. The answer becomes very, very complicated. It takes time, and it takes money. And again, the old saying, proverb, "It takes a village to raise a child," it's absolutely true. All the pieces of the puzzle have to be together to head off problems, and we've been doing that with programs like Smart Moves, having officers embedded in the classroom with these kids. It's not only about teaching the kids about the dangers of drugs and alcohol, but it's being a positive role model in the classroom, and every single kid in Sterling Heights gets this. All 19 elementary schools have 10 weeks of a positive role model in the classroom, saying this is right and this is wrong, and that can't be understated. Every positive role model in any kid's life is a win, and we're doing that in Sterling Heights. This is our core program. There's a couple of our officers with all the kids in the school. Again, embedding them in the school, positive role models, and having that partnership with our kids is fantastic. Another core program, this was through Parks and Recreation, a summer camp program, having our police officers there with these kids and showing them, you know, what a police officer does, and, you know, that they're there to protect them and keep them safe. And then, again, another part of the puzzle is, you know, mental health, right? This has been a big topic for many years, and I applaud Council for approving the budget, getting a full-time social worker hired. We already have her up and running. She's already investigating a lot of different issues. We just had an issue at a local high school, a student that has been, there's been a lot of problems and concern. The social worker's been working with them and already making headway into keeping that student safe. The school is extremely appreciative in the hour she's already put in to making sure that kid is successful. It's been phenomenal. A couple homeless issues that she's dealt with, one involving some pretty serious threats, doing some outreach and getting that person into help and treatment, that just happened today. She's been working with Parks and Recreation and the Building Department just in the last week, so she's been everywhere trying to offer more services. So we're very, very happy on this brand-new position. And not only that, but the seven new police officers that we're moving forward with hiring, five of those are for a direct patrol unit, but two of them are going to be doing more community policing, more community policing in the high school, the middle schools, parks, and throughout the city. Also, just in the last few years, we started our Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition. We never had such a group, and multiple members of Council are on this Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition. Again, a nonprofit that is dedicated to coming up with programming in order to keep people away from drugs, aware of drugs, and prevention strategies. And then, something else we're very proud of is our comeback, our QRT team. This is a special program that we pioneered and piloted here in Michigan. We're the first department in the state to do this with Families Against Narcotics of someone overdoses on drugs, which we are seeing epidemic levels of overdose. In fact, we had, for the first time ever, from keeping statistics, over 100,000 people die from drug overdoses last year. It's the highest level ever recorded, and almost all of it is fentanyl-related, heroin, opiates, and so this isn't going away, it's worse. And it's worse because of the pandemic, the depression, what people have been struggling with for the last year, so this program has been phenomenal. Back in the day before this program, someone would overdose, we'd take the medical run, and we'd leave. Now, someone overdoses, within three days, I have a police officer, Officer Demeen Care, and one of seven other officers that do this program, a peer recovery coach and a family recovery coach, ring the doorbell, tell that person that we love them, we're happy that they're alive, we have treatment available for them, we can get them in today, and this program has been phenomenal, very successful, and I think right now we have 25 departments who are now doing the same program that we started here in Sterling Heights. So again, it's another piece of the puzzle. And then, our volunteers that work with the city, another piece of the puzzle, our CERT team, our Citizens Patrol, again, volunteers looking out for our own residents and making sure everyone is safe at our public events and driving around in our subdivisions, again, just another piece of the puzzle. That's all I have for tonight, but again, our hearts and thoughts go out to everyone in the Hoxton community. It was a tragic week, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be willing to take them.
Council, does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt. Thank you. It's unfortunate that we even have to have this conversation. It's no secret that I work at the Career Prep Center for Warren Consolidated Schools. I'm sorry. It's been a rough week. My question to you, Chief, and this is public information, so I'm not spilling any tea leaves. Last Friday, there was a bomb threat written on a bathroom stall at Mott High School in Warren. So Michigan State Police were called out. Warren K-9 came through. They did a search of the entire building, from what I understand, per Dr. Livernoy's letter to the community. They were also going to research it on Monday before school began. Here's my concern, and maybe it's for my own selfish reasons, but there's over 1,000 kids that go through Career Prep Center. That building, we have students, we have three sets of students come into that building every day. They come from Warren Mott, Warren Cusno, Community High, Sterling Heights High School, Fraser High School, Clintondale High School, Parkdale Christian, or Parkway Christian. They come from different school districts. What is the communication between, if something happens in a building that has students at Career Prep Center, what's the communication with the Sterling Heights Police Department to keep them in the loop? And my personal opinion, and I'm sure it wasn't any municipality's call, it was the school district's call, but I believe, since they didn't know the student that wrote this comment, that Career Prep Center should have been searched as well. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, it's difficult. You know, my son goes to a similar program called O-Tech in Oakland County, so he's doing the culinary arts, and that is a combination of kids from all different schools, and they were closed for five days longer than even Rochester Schools because of an exact threat like that from another student from another district. It is way more difficult, right, when they come from Clintondale or another school district, that that message gets sent all the way to Sterling Heights so that we can be part of the investigation. And a lot of times, especially the last week, you know, we have investigated dozens of reports. Our officer, we have assigned out the FBI task force, they did 88 cases in just a day and a half, so ridiculous, the last week and a half, and, you know, the, again, could someone have failed to call somebody or notify? Yeah, that could have absolutely happened. Sounds like in this case, maybe that did happen, or they didn't think it was enough of a threat, but I can tell you that if they thought something was going to happen at, you know, Career Prep Center, we're going to get a call. And like I said, just before this meeting tonight, I was on the phone with Dr. Livernoy over another concern. Literally, we're still investigating that as we speak, so he calls me on everything, their school, security calls me on everything, so if it was a real threat in Sterling Heights at Career Prep Center, I would get a call. Hopefully, I would get a call. Sometimes, the breakdown could happen, you're right, from that remote school, getting that message to Warren Con that that kid is now over there at Career Prep Center, and that message didn't travel across. Yeah, that's a concern.
And we don't have a resource officer there. The resource officer is assigned to Sterling Heights High School, which is not far away, it's across the street. However, I would like to see maybe a little more presence in our building, just because we have transient, I mean, we have three sets of kids coming in and out of that building. And we do have locked-door system, and we actually had a staff meeting today, and the staff was able to give some input on how we thought things could change. And the administration over at Warren Con is working diligently, as every school district is, meeting, you know, daily on how we can improve things, but it just seems like we're kind of out there in the wind. We feel we're out there in the wind with kids coming from every direction of Macomb County, and, you know, anything can happen anywhere, and God forbid it doesn't, never happens again anywhere, but it's just a concern of mine that we are informed if something should happen within any of the school districts that have children that end up in our city at a school.
And I'll follow up with the superintendent, Councilwoman Schmidt, and make sure he's aware of these concerns, and I'll get back with you with what, if there's a plan or a better communication there.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Council, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Chief, can you walk us through the job of a school resource officer? What do they do? How do they engage with the students? And also, what happens, as Councilwoman Schmidt said, what happens if there's an incident at a junior high, I'm sorry, middle school or elementary school?
Yeah, so that school resource officer, I think it's a two-week program, almost 80 hours, to learn how to become a school resource officer. You may say, well, what's the big deal about becoming a school resource officer? Well, number one, you're there to build a relationship with the students, right? You're that positive role model in the school, because if kids aren't talking to you, you're losing good intel. Kids will talk to the police every single time. The good kids will, and even some of the bad kids will. They'll come up and they'll talk to that police officer, and that's where we get some of our best information, and that's why they're in the school. Number two, when someone does do something wrong, brings a weapon to school, drugs to school, that officer's right there. He handles it, makes the arrest, and brings the person back to our jail. And the third part is working with the administration and putting out presentations and actual programs in the actual classroom. So they're kind of multifaceted, what they do, and they become part of the staff there. They're viewed as part of the staff, but they have a badge and a gun, and you want them to be approachable. And really good school resource officers are loved by the students. You want them to be part of that school, and you want the kids talking to them. That's the power of having a school resource officer there. You know, how could a police officer just walking in the door have that relationship? Okay, I walked in, I checked out the building, I got back in my car and drove away. Those kids don't know who that is, but they know who Officer Campo is at Sterling Heights High School. Absolutely. He's there every single day. He greets them, shakes hands, high-fives. Everybody knows that. That's the power of having that, you know, that officer right there with all of those kids.
And can you follow up in regards to schools that don't have a resource officer, like a middle school?
Yeah, so if something happens at the middle school, they always will have the school resource officer. They can leave that high school and handle it at the middle school. They like that because it keeps that dedicated, that officer who has that skill set to even deal with some of the middle school program, the problems and junior high. The school district itself has security officers located within the middle schools, but they will oftentimes send the SRO down to the middle school to handle an issue, and then get them back into the high school, obviously, we don't want them gone that long, but they will absolutely, they know what's going on, and they'll, in fact, the school resource officer for Sterling Heights High School is dealing with the middle school program as we speak during this nighttime hours, so he is, he's doing this as we speak.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. I'm all set, Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Zearco.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Through the chair to the chief. You mentioned how many schools, you know, we have in the city. As a comparison, how many are in Warren Con and how many are in Utica school districts?
Oh, so you're going to quiz me now?
The reason why, while you're thinking about that, I wanted to clarify and just make sure that I didn't misunderstand you when you said that Warren, the Warren Police go into the Warren Consolidated Schools to do the training there?
Yes.
And how is that compatible with what we're doing here in, you know, is what your, our plans are and our protocols are? And I would think if there's an incident that's going to happen in a Warren Con school, we certainly aren't going to be looking for the Warren Police to come in and handle it. So how does that work?
Yeah, the Warren Consolidated School District, I said before, has Warren Police come in, teach their lockdown drills and all this, similar to exactly what we do in Sterling Heights, and the school district does a lot of that training on their own. We don't have the staff to literally go into every, we have 19 elementary schools alone, plus the junior highs and high schools. There's no way we could train every single student, teacher, in every single school. So the schools do this. They do the, just like in Oxford, they practice their lockdown drills, and it's exactly what the schools do, and they know exactly what they're supposed to do. But Warren is going to respond very similar to the way Sterling Heights responds to an active shooter situation, there's no doubt, and I don't see any incompatibility there with the way they respond, you know, to what we would do here in Sterling Heights. We, again, when the district asks, we will go out there and do the presentations and the training, but a lot of times, the district does it in-house. They don't ask, so I can't force my help and support onto them, and a lot of times, the school district has this very certain course that they want to teach or a way they want to do business. It's not my job to tell the school district, you know, they have an idea of ways to secure doors, the ways to lock down, and this is their prerogative, it's the school district, and then we will go in there and assist and help and support that cause, and we do that whenever asked, but in this case, Warren Consolidated Schools, they have Warren PD that handles the police end of it.
And I understand that, but, okay, but, if there's a problem in a Warren Con school, it's not the Warren, it's not the Warren Police Department that's going to respond to that school, it's going to be the Sterling Heights Police Department.
100%.
So that's why, that's something that I question, that I want to know how that works. I just see that there's, it's, it could be compatible, but I'm not, I'm not convinced that it is.
Yep, and we would respond the same way to a Utica school or a Warren Con school. Our officers are trained to respond, even if it's a church or, this thing about all the other businesses that could have an active shooter, a mall, a movie theater, we don't, you know, the, I can't train every single business in Sterling Heights, there's no way, but our officers are going to respond the same way, the way they were trained. So that's, that's, you know, we have the training part down, it's just different buildings, different names, different jurisdictions, but what we do on the police end is not going to change, but you're right, Sterling Heights is showing up at all of our Warren Con schools, But you're right, Sterling Heights is showing up at all of our Warren Con schools, absolutely.
Right. And like you say, you, you can't train everybody, but you would hopefully, the training on the other end, whether you give it or whether Warren, you know, whether the Warren Police Department does it or the Fraser Police, that it's all the same kind of training so that it's, it's a, you know, a universal response.
Yes, and it is a lockdown strategy, right? Run, hide, fight, it's all the same thing now universally, which is great, that everyone's kind of preaching the same thing.
Okay. No further questions.
Counsel, anyone else?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Rosky.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Through the chair to Chief Dale. So Chief, I have a couple of questions, and this is in relation to the active shooter, but it's also in relation to crimes in general perpetrated in, in schools. So with, especially with like the TikTok challenges that have been going on and other in-house crimes, what is our, your process as, as the policing, police department, and what is, how is that going with the TikTok challenges, with other crimes in the schools? How is, how is that, and can you maybe walk me through the process of how are we encouraging schools to alert you when crimes are perpetrated or alleged crimes? And what are we doing to head off problems with students that may be having concerns and issues? I understand, and my, my philosophy is also that sometimes schools and teachers, while maybe best feel that they have the best interest of the child, maybe they don't always have the perspective to be able to provide better or different opportunities for counseling, that they're, they're, they might be too close to the, to the problem. So what, what are, what are you finding, and how are you handling those things?
Yeah, so the school district's phenomenal. There's an issue, they call us. Again, just before this council meeting, the Warren Superintendent called me, told me what happened, then I talked to the head of security, that his security was then put in contact with our detective bureau, and then it went straight to our school resource officer, and all within fifteen minutes, we knew the student's name, what had transpired, Officer Campo was coming in to address the issue. It's, we don't believe it's, it's not an credible threat, but we can't take that risk. So we're still going to do the follow-up.
And you're talking about the bomb threat?
Uh, no, this was just another thing that happened this afternoon.
Another issue, okay.
Yes, yeah.
All right, very good.
So we still have to make the house call, right? We show up at the house, we talk to the student, we talk to the parents, we ask, is there weapons in this house? Is there anything else that you've seen? So we have to really decide, is this legitimate or not? And in, in most of the cases, unfortunately, well, fortunately, I guess, that it's not legitimate, right? So, but the problem is, when you cry wolf so many times, then something bad could slip through the cracks. We, we can't afford, we have to be a hundred percent, right? Ninety-nine percent isn't good enough, because if one thing happens, you know, we all lose. So we have to investigate every single one of these, and the manpower, and the hours are ridiculous. In the last couple of weeks here, ten days have been really brutal, and we just, we're not taking any chances, the school district isn't, and we follow up every single concern. Now, the TikTok challenges, some of the early ones, remember they were encouraging vandalizing, vandalizing the bathroom? We didn't get that many of those, to be honest with you, and thank God, that was more of the media-driven, like, look at this dumb thing that, you know, kids are doing, but we didn't get that many of them. And then, like I said, if someone threatens that they have a knife or a gun, they're going to hurt or kill somebody, the school district immediately calls us. We're involved, and it's at the high school, this, school resource officers in there, in that meeting, and we have to make that decision with the school. Is this credible, and what else do we need to do? And I think we do an exceptional job here in Sterling Heights, but that's not to say you never know. There's, could be that one kid that's under the radar, and you would hope a responsible person or a counselor or someone in the school can identify this before you have a problem. And that's what keeps me up at night, you know, the one you don't catch, the problem that goes undiagnosed, and the kid didn't get help or treatment, and then something bad happens.
Right. All right, great, thank you.
Yep.
No further questions.
Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you. Through the chair to Chief Dale. You said that you have the ability to have video and actually access to all the Utica schools. Do you have that same ability with Warren Con?
Absolutely. Yep, we have both camera systems loaded on the computer at the front desk. They just click the button, and a menu pops down of all the schools, they click on the school, and it has a map of every single camera within the school, and you just click on the camera you want to see, and you can get a live, real-time view of what's going on in the hallway, the cafeteria, outside parking lots. It's, it's phenomenal.
Do you have that with the different academies also?
No, not with some of the private schools, but that's an interesting point. Maybe we start, you know, to, to make some contact with some of those private schools and see if they'd be willing to share their access to their, because obviously it's up to them, whether they want to share access. And even with Warren Con and Utica Schools, there was some faith and trust that we would only use it for law enforcement emergency purposes, because we understand schools should be this place where kids feel safe, teachers feel safe, that they're not being watched by the police. I understand that, so we made promises, we made agreements that we would only utilize that system in case of emergency, and we're sticking to our end of the promise, and the school district is allowing us access. So we can definitely look into private partnerships and whether or not those schools want to give us their log-on password, even if it's possible to remotely access, but it's a great point.
Yeah, that might be a good idea. I recall years ago, we talked about getting layouts of different businesses in the event that there was an active shooter or an incident like that. Did we ever accomplish that, or is that something in the future?
Some of our bigger factors, at Chrysler, we did their stamping plant and assembly, and we also did every single high school with a company that did 360 mapping. So we took a camera, we took like fifteen pictures, and it made a full globe at like thirty different locations throughout the building, so you could click the button and then see inside the building. But now with cameras, especially with our schools, I can just click on the camera and just see the, a live feed of that hallway. So the idea of having a picture, a 360 picture of a hallway, I can just turn on the camera now and see it. So we haven't really, so that, I think we feel really good about the schools. And a couple factories moved forward, but even with factories, Chrysler Stamping and Assembly, I remember I was part of that project, they've retooled probably twice since we did that first project, completely redid the inside of the factory, so it no longer even looks like what it did ten years ago. So that's always the difficult part, keeping updated blueprints of every business in Sterling Heights would be very, very difficult.
Is that something that maybe if a business wanted to have that access with the police department, if they could voluntarily say, okay, how do we do this? Can I be logged into your system?
Yeah, if they wanted to give us access, that would be great, but again, a private business saying, yeah, here are law enforcement, here's my password to get into my cameras, you can watch everything we do twenty-four seven. I, I think a lot of businesses are going to say, I have no interest in doing that. But if someone wanted to, yeah, we would be all ears, we would love to have that, but obviously you have to battle privacy, and you don't want to be a surveillance state, I get all that. But yeah, that would be, that would be great if we had access everywhere, and we'll see cameras everywhere, but, you know, we have Ring Doorbell cameras, which is the new innovation, right? So when we have a crime that occurs in Sterling Heights, we go door-to-door, everyone that's got exterior cameras, and we ask them for that footage, like, do you have footage from last night at one o'clock? And it's been phenomenal, the neighbors share, share with us that video. I have really no right to get it, I could probably get a search warrant, maybe in some cases, but a lot of times volunteer, the resident will volunteer the video footage, they'll email it to us, and it's helped us solve many, many crimes.
Yeah. I was thinking mainly places like jewelry stores or things like that, that have that concern about being broken into and catching the bad guy.
Yep. Yeah, that would be immediate. So by the time the robbery happens, it's over so fast for us to get that, yeah, log it. It's going to be after the fact, and they're going to show, they're going to have, show us the video, like, here's the video, here's the bad guy. But, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Oh, you get his pictures of the back of his head.
Yes, yeah, hopefully there's one good picture.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Mr. Radke, anything?
I think it's been pretty much covered by my colleagues, but I'm so glad that the police department is working very hard with our local school districts. This is a problem that seems to be growing and not going away, and, and then we can do to prevent the problem here in Sterling Heights, I am all for. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Taylor?
Yeah, Mrs. Schmidt.
Can I just follow up with what, where Mrs. Zarco was going? I, I think why the Warren Police Department are involved with Warren Con is because their administration building is located in Warren. I think that's a big factor. However, when we did active shooting, you did active shooting training at CPC in the summer, our police department gave suggestions for us on how to improve and do escapes, correct? Yeah. So, so they are working together with us. I, I'm not feeling like the Sterling Heights Police Department isn't, and I, I think if something should happen at, at a Warren Con school in Sterling Heights, we're calling Sterling Heights. But, but I think that's where that, that happened, is administration is located in Warren, so they went with the Warren. And I can't speak for them, I'm just assuming that, but, but we do get the same Alice training, you know, Alice training is universal training, and, you know, they did a good job with all of us, and, and, you know, those kids in Oxford did what they were trained to do. And, you know, I brought some things up in our staff meeting today that I want clarification on. We, we had a code word of when it was safe to open the doors, because in Alice training, you're taught, even if someone says they're a police officer, you don't open the door. And that's what those kids did. And we had a code, you know, somebody's in the building, you know, we know what the name is, and that was our all-clear, the active shooter situation is, you know, under control. So I'm, I'm confident with the training that we did get from Warren, but of course, we would be calling Sterling Heights. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation tonight, and I appreciate the leadership team and your officers here and who've been out in the community and, and doing this work. I, I saw on social media that, got a lot of attention, that Royal Oak has this program where you can get a gun lock or a trigger lock, if you want, you just show up, you get it. Do, do we have anything like that? Do we have any programs to, well, let me just ask that first of all.
Yeah, so we have.
What are we doing?
It's funny you should ask. So we just gave away our last four gun locks at the front desk, so they've been a hot commodity as of late, so we're ordering more as we speak, and we'll put it out on our social media that, hey, gun locks are back in, they're free of charge, just walk right in and grab a gun lock. So we have more coming.
Is there anything else you think we could do in terms of gun safety training or education for parents, for gun owners, for the community, for anybody who's interested in it?
Yeah, so obviously locking up a firearm is the first step. You know, really, no child should have access to a firearm, it should be locked in a safe, it should be secure. Even if you go shooting with your friends, your family and your kids, it's just good gun safety policy to have. You never know when a problem, or someone visiting your house, maybe you trust your son or daughter, but they have a friend over, and you have no idea who that is, now that gun and that weapon is missing or utilized. That's our worst nightmare in law enforcement as well, and then oftentimes, the gun isn't locked up, your house is broken into, they go through your dresser, your closet, and they always steal the guns in the house. So now you have a stolen gun on the street that could be used against law enforcement. So on so many different levels, locking and securing a firearm is, is what we in law enforcement would like to see, first and foremost. If you want to throw a trigger lock on that or a gun lock, even better.
Well, I appreciate, and I, like I said, I appreciate the presentation tonight, but I, I'm afraid what we're talking about here is all the steps that we can do to keep the fatalities down in single digits instead of double digits. We're not talking about what we're going to do in order to stop this from happening, but we know we can, we know we can. It doesn't happen anywhere else in the world. This is the only civilized nation in the world where this happens. We are the only people, we're the only society, we're the only culture that has to debate, how do we send kids to school without them getting killed by a crazed gunman or another student? We're the only one. No other nation on earth does this, people. No other nation has this, this ridiculous conversation we've just had for the last forty minutes, okay? And until we start taking that seriously, we're just mitigating the number of kids who are going to get mowed down by a classmate. That's it. That's all we're doing here. And it drives me crazy to think that. It's just, it's insane that we keep doing this over and over, keep doing it. And it might not be Michigan next, might be Sterling Heights. We don't know. We know it will happen, like clockwork. So Chief, until we get to a day where we take this problem seriously, I appreciate your efforts and everything your officers do. So, thank you. Mark?
Mayor, I have nothing else in my report. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Mr. Matthews.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Item L, as I understand it, from the Detroit Design Center there, for ninety-nine thousand eight hundred dollars, those three monuments are a memorial for two officers slain in the line of duty and one firefighter, just the same. I'd like to...
I, I can't hear you, Mr. Matthews.
I'm sorry.
Wait one second.
Oh, he's got some... That's okay. As I understand, item L here, for the three public art memorial sculptures, that's actually a memorial for two police officers killed in line of duty and one firefighter as well. And I think it's important to recognize here that these memorials serve a purpose. I know not everybody may agree on the particular artistic nature of them, the particular design, I'm not an artist myself, but the important thing, I think, to recognize here is they are there for three individuals who served our city admirably, and even though, you know, from an average person's salary, it looks like a lot of money there, it's less than one dollar per resident, you know, for all three, to recognize them in perpetuity. So I think that is a responsible use of funds, and I appreciate the memorial. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else under the consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Been moved and supported with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight, consider appointments to the City of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, we've got three appointments. I'll skip the Elected Officials Compensation Commission for now and jump to the Housing Commission. This is a request for a reappointment, it's a council appointment to a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Is there anyone who'd like to make this appointment?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis.
Resolved to appoint Wanda Walker to the Housing Commission to a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter four point zero three, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
Been moved and supported, is there any discussion?
I have no discussion.
No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With regard to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission, this was up in the summer, I postponed it until after the election. I still haven't given it enough thought to make appointments today. There's no urgency here. They, this board, I don't think meets again until February of twenty-three. So if you guys don't mind, I'd like somebody to make a motion to postpone this item to the first meeting in June of twenty twenty-two.
So moved. Support.
Been moved and supported with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any other item tonight? Mrs. Wright.
Hi, I just want to address a couple of things. I appreciate the chief coming and telling us everything that his department is doing to make sure that our children and the rest of us in Sterling Heights are safe. For me, one of the important things going along with what the mayor said, I come from the mental health field. I've counseled numerous individuals, and we can talk about the need for mental health and, and bullying, and how this plays a role in these shootings and the violence in this country, but until we control the access that our children have for guns, nothing is going to change. In this country, there are five million children that live in households that have loaded and unlocked guns. Five million children that can pick up one of their parents' weapons and come to a school or go to a movie theater and shoot a number of people. And we know that seventy-six percent of school shootings happen with guns that the child gets from their home or from a relative. So I implore everyone in the city, if you have an unlocked weapon, please get a gun lock or get a safe. I know a lot of people talk about how they want it for home protection and they can't access their gun quick enough if it's in a safe. You can get an electronic safe that will allow you to access your gun in under three seconds. It's not that difficult and it will still keep you safe if you need it. Um, on a lighter note, we went to Sterling Christmas over the weekend and my daughter loved it again. Um, standing in the lines, um, long lines, but we enjoyed it. But we got to talk to a lot of the other people that were around us. And a lot of them actually came from outside of the city, um, you know, Roseville, Shelby Township, East Point, all over the place. And the one thing that had every single one I talked to had in common is they all said that none of their cities did these events that our city does for their residents. And, you know, I really do want to thank you all, DPW, Parks and Rec, everybody, the volunteers, who put these events together, um, especially this one. My daughter was terrified after uh Oxford. She's five. And she overheard some of the older kids at her elementary school talking about it. And she came home and asked if someone was going to hurt her and make her go to heaven. And um, and so this event sort of made her forget about it and um just be a kid and be happy for one night. And so I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Anyone else? Mr. Nelson?
Good evening. This is the first time that I, the whole council was together and I come up here and congratulate you all for your election. Uh, I'll see you again in four years, Mike.
You might.
Yeah, I might, I might, yeah. Uh, but anyway, uh, I want to again congratulate. And this is what I would like to see as part of uh an expanded uh agenda item is training. Training by the members of our staff. This was very, very helpful. I came in and thinking that we didn't have anything to do with the resource officers. I know years ago, when I served on council, we didn't. And so this was very, very, very educational. Um, I have two items. While I was out there campaigning, um, there was a couple of items that came up, more than a couple, actually. I met with a number of uh people that live on dirt roads in Sterling Heights. Um, one of them is Gardner East. That was the big one, Nathan and Dawn. Dawn, I'm surprised we're not getting sued for people losing parts of their cars. Uh, Dawn is the the road, you all know where it is, but it's the road between Van Dyke and Utica Road, which could be a a place to offload some of that. Um, they've been trying to get the road paved. And I know the city has been working with them, but now they're looking at Mount Road, two-hundred-and-thirty-plus million dollars being put into that road. And they're still going to spew gravel on that brand-new highway. People shouldn't be living like that. There's two brand-new homes on Nathan. And those two brand-new homes, I don't know how they didn't have to do some kind of access into those new homes. Um, you know, the nineteen-point-eight-million-dollar rescue plan, you're talking about one of the items was to improve Plum Brook. Okay, that's mostly a residential street. Why can't you look at, take all the roads that are now um that are now dirt, gravel, holes, mud puddles, and develop those? Um, the other thing is, the other issue that I had was transparency. And I just started going back through all the agendas. And what I see, we've done a lot of presentations, we've done a lot of congratulating. You get down to the considerations and all we have is every, every meeting since July has been boards and commissions, appointments. Is that all we do? Transparency is not there. You guys are talking behind the scenes, but it's not coming out here where the people need to know. So um, th- those are just a couple of suggestions. You might be able to do something with the transparency and you might be able to do something with those roads. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Only got one left. Come on up.
Uh, not to be too much of an echo here, but I would like to congratulate uh council because I have not been here in some time. As I understand it, there may be a few familiar faces returning for the next term. I'd also like to congratulate uh Clerk Riska for a well-run and smooth election. I unfortunately do want to talk a little bit more about the Oxford tragedy. It feels like all I've been discussing for the past week. I'm a teacher in the Troy School District and um a number of people we had in the district were impacted uh more or less directly. They might not have been in Oxford schools, but they didn't know somebody who was. A colleague told me on Friday that this was the twenty-eighth uh school shooting this year in the U.S., even though many schools were closed for the first half of the year due to COVID. Now, after an event like this, this is a good time to reflect on our current practices. And there's actually a lot of good there. Uh, Ms. Schmidt, I believe, brought up that Alice training is something that's used in the schools. And that, as I understand it, is the top-of-the-line training. And I believe the police, you said, run, hide, fight, and it's basically the same thing that Alice does. And I feel with that training, uh, much safer now than I did, say, ten years ago. And they said, you know, if you just sit under your desk, you know, that's the best we can do. You have more control over what you do in those situations. And as I understand it, the teacher who was shot in the shoulder there and um is recovering said that that uh training saved her life because as she understands it, um, had she not done that, uh, that might not have ended as well as it did for her. Now, for all the dangerous events that we have in schools, there's probably a lot that are prevented. We don't hear about, um, I'm sure our chief of police and the whole police department are doing a wonderful job mitigating as much as they can. And I think in a lot of circumstances, they don't get enough credit for all the circumstances that don't happen, that we don't hear about because they don't make the news. So I think it's important we recognize them, um, for all the efforts they make every day, even if they do not get the spotlight. But for all those efforts, um, things still are uh far too common. Um, the chief said it takes a village and it does. And there are two major things that we look at in these types of circumstances. For the past couple of days, um, we've been talking a lot at school about mental health. It's been a very difficult thing for a lot of our students and myself to discuss. But mental health is very difficult. Um, I used to work at the alternative at high school for seven years in the tri-school district, and a lot of those students come from very broken homes. You can ask yourself if it's uh they, they want vengeance against somebody, maybe they're just troubled, maybe they're just spiteful or malicious, but at the end of the day, those underpinnings can take years, lots of time to unpack. And I, unlike the young lady before me, am not a mental health professional, but I do know it's very complicated to unpack those. What isn't complicated to unpack is each of these events involves some type of firearm. And keeping them under, you know, a safe lock, a mechanism of some sort where you can make sure that only the proper person has access to it is probably, at this point sadly, the best we can do. As the mayor alluded to, there's probably a lot more we could do if we wanted to. But we've been down this road many times before and we probably will be again uh not too long from now. It probably won't be next door. It probably won't be in Oxford or Oakland County or Macomb County, but it will be somewhere. It's only a matter of time. Preventing this proliferation of these acts with these firearms, um, if you keep them locked up, maybe if you keep the ammunition safe, we can reduce the amount of times that it happens. But again, I think we're just talking about how many more times you need to deal with this, not if it's going to happen again. Let's try not to leave too much to go under the radar. And we're going to have, hopefully, a lot of us here some time to be with our loved ones over the next couple of weeks. Let's make sure they're in a good um emotional place as best as they can be so we're all feeling as safe and secure and we can be as happy as possible in the days to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll close that portion and go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool?
Mayor, just uh quickly, I wanted to comment on the uh Mr. Nelson's concern about a number of streets that are still unpaved in the city. And fortunately, we do not have many, but just by way of history, uh, the reason we still have some unpaved roads is those are left from the township days before we became a city. And as the city became uh fully developed over the last fifty years, uh, developers were required to put in public streets. And they, of course, pass those costs on to individuals that buy the homes. Uh, so in essence, a form of a special assessment, if you will. With that in mind, the way we've handled unpaved roads from prior to then is through special assessment. And so if individuals on dirt roads or gravel roads or gravel roads want their street improved, they have to submit a petition. And if the majority want it, uh, then the city council considers a special assessment. Interestingly, just as many people who want the road paved, there's the same number that don't want it paved. They like the rural feel feel of it and they just feel that paving it increases speeding down the roads and so on and so forth. So the few that we have left now uh simply don't have the majority to get to where they need to be to get it paved. On Dawn Street, we came very close to a special assessment there. However, the option that the majority wanted was cul-de-sacking the street. And of course, police and fire have some major concerns with that. So, you know, we're trying to work through those situations, but um it's a little more complicated than it might seem on the surface. And I just wanted to comment on transparency. Uh, we have our strategic planning session on January twenty-fifth. It's one of our most important sessions of the year, along with our budget hearings that then follow. Uh, we encourage residents to participate in our strategic planning process. It's really very important. And we have a number of events in addition uh to the um bi-weekly council meetings where residents can weigh in and um share their thoughts. Uh, just another example, tonight's e-packet was, is a hundred-and-fifty pages. And it's posted on our website. Our packets uh uh average about two-hundred pages. So any resident can pull up our packet and look at any item they want on the agenda. And uh if they do have questions and they're not at the meeting, I know the city council is incredibly accessible. I know the mayor is very accessible and so is administration. We always work with residents on any questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Kuszywski?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We do have one item tonight.
Okay, I'll open it up to council for new business reports, anything tonight. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Um, I just wanted to remind all the residents that the DPW is having their forty-third annual or more than forty-third annual um food, food drive, the Ken Stompowski Food Drive. Uh, donations of non-perishable food to benefit the Macomb Food Program are being accepted at the DPW building on Eighteen Mile from seven AM to three PM, Monday through Friday, and at Community Relations here at City Hall from nine AM to one PM and two PM to five PM, Monday through Friday. So any donations um are appreciated. And uh if you would rather give a monetary donation, they're accepting checks made out to the Macomb Food Program. So any help is necessary, you know, is is truly appreciated. Um, and on a um, a fun note, I'm looking straight out of City Hall right now from my desk and I see uh the Wesner House, uh, the Christmas house I can see. And it's a a block and a half away and I can, I can see it. So, um, you know, during these stressful times of of the holidays, um, I think it's really important that we get out there and enjoy some of the uh holiday cheer that people have worked so hard to decorate their homes and businesses in and and kind of uh step back from some of this um stress that we've all been under um throughout the holidays. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Mrs. Arco?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Uh, first of all, just to repeat, um, what um Mrs. Wright said is that Sterling Christmas was magical. To, you have to just watch people enjoying themselves. You're right, the lines were there, but people got to meet one another as they stood in line. Um, it just was so, it was great to to watch, especially after what had just happened a few days before, to think that you could bring that many people together in a safe environment. So, you know, it was a blessing. Um, the, a couple of things that were brought up, though, because we do such a good job, um, is I happened to be talking to parents of a young gentleman that lives in Fraser right now, getting to the point, he's under twenty-five, saving his money, he's going to be looking for a place to, you know, to buy um a place of his own. And he said, I'm looking in Sterling Heights because they have more to offer their residents. And it, my first thought was, what we're doing and what we've been talking about is making a difference because we're trying to bring younger people in and they're looking at that opportunity to come and move into Sterling Heights. So I thought that was a good thing. The other was that a non-resident asked if there was like a yearly pass that they could pay upfront to use the facilities that we have um on an annual for, it would be an annual fee so that they could use, say, the gyms for the pickleball or maybe um pay a certain fee for, to use the splash pad during the summer or the ice rink so that instead of paying, you know, the difference every time they were here, they could just pay a flat rate for the entire year. So that was, I thought, maybe something we could look into. And I'm glad Mr. Vanderpool brought up strategic planning because that is my favorite meeting of the year because it's a day, well, this time it's going to be a day. It used to be a night of possibilities. Now it's a whole day of possibilities as we talk about what could happen in the future here in the city. So mark your calendars, January the twenty-fifth. We'll be here all day starting at eight-thirty AM. So nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Arco. Will we be here or will we be at the community center?
Uh, good point, Mayor. We will actually be at the community center. Thank you.
All right, very good. Anyone else, council? Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, as Mr. Nelson said, I've not been back since the election. So I, first of all, want to thank the voters for re-electing me. Uh, the mayor and I and uh Councilman Kosky were sworn in by Judge Wigan on Zoom, which was a very interesting experience, but uh it worked out. Uh, I want to personally thank the voters for re-electing me and giving me four more years of your trust to do what's right for the city of Sterling Heights. Uh, standing for office is a tremendously humbling experience that I know that Mr. Nelson knows and everyone else up here knows because you're out there just asking people for support. And to have it come through an election day is just probably one of the best experiences of your life. And to be re-elected in the city of Sterling Heights, which has so many people and so many things going on, it shows you that we're really doing something right here. So I want to thank all my colleagues and all the people uh at home. And we're going to have a wonderful four more years together. With that, um, I have a few questions uh through the chair, Mr. Vanderpool. I think Mr. Nelson makes a great point. I drove down the potholed mess that is Dawn Drive today on the way over to City Hall, and it was uh awful. And the fact that the city has not paved these roads is a problem for me. Yes, uh, the people of the street can bring forward a petition for a special assessment, but the city council doesn't need their permission to pave that road. If we so choose, we could order a special assessment and pave those streets. And I think especially for Dawn, we should pave that street. It's a direct cut-through from Van Dyke to Utica. People drive down it all the time. And especially if that area, that North Van Dyke District, is going to come to fruition and become a focal point for our city, I can't think of a worse street to kind of open people's eyes to the experience in Sterling Heights. I have not experienced uh Nathan, Nathan or Gardner East. I'll have to go take a look at them, but uh definitely Dawn Drive needs to be paved. I don't think it should be a cul-de-sac. I think it works the way it works, but it should be paved. And I think this council should take action to do that. So I'd hope that we might consider that. Um, one more thing, before the election, I know that uh, Mr. Mayor, you and I had talked about bringing forward a resolution to reinstitute the human rights ordinance in Sterling Heights. I don't know if you've given much time or thought to that, but I was hoping we'd put a day on the calendar where we could discuss it as a council, hopefully, uh, maybe the second meeting in January? Without objection, if that works for the city council?
Um, I have no objection. Just, do you need any clarification on what Mr. Radke is asking for, Mr. Kuszywski or Mr. Vanderpool? Are you asking to bring the ordinance for introduction or are you just looking to have a discussion?
I guess I'll have a discussion on it for right now, but I'd like to institute an ordinance after that discussion, hopefully.
Okay. I mean, I don't think you need to have, I don't think you need our consent to have that discussion.
I think you can raise on our new business.
Okay. Well, I'm with that. Yep, that sounds great to me. And with that, uh, I hope everyone has a very happy holiday season. And we have one more meeting, but uh the holidays have really sped up, sped along right to us. So I hope everyone's having a wonderful time at home.
Mrs. Sarowski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, um, it is, as uh Mr. Radke just mentioned, it is the holiday season. So I would like to please remind some of our uh more gifted residents to please, if you do have time, energy or funds, the Friends of Foster Kids are still looking for help, donations, any of your time that you can give, they are a wonderful charity. They're right here in Sterling Heights. They give so much to the foster children who do not have families that can take care of them and do not have the resources and do not have very much at all. If you can just wrap gifts, you don't even have to come with any real resources financially or or presents, but if you just have your hands, they would be more than happy to have you. So please consider them as something, as a charitable giving um opportunity for yourselves. And then um, uh, today is December seventh. It is Pearl Harbor Day. So I do want to honor the veterans who have passed away or who have any that are still alive and any World War II veterans. Thank you for your service and to please honor those veterans. Again, please think of them and remember them in your hearts, everyone. And again, it is the Christmas season. It is the holiday season. Please be kind to people. Uh, it is a, I work, even though I'm a nurse and I've, you know, you've heard this a thousand times for me, but most of what I do is take calls. As a director of nursing, I take those calls from people who like to uh let me know what we can do better. And not always the nicest way possible that they tell me this, um, what I can do better, what my nurses can do better, what we can do better. And and I'm asking you to please consider it, just saying things in the kindest way. Please be generous in your, in your thoughts and in your words as generous as you can. It goes a long way. And that's all I have, Mayor Taylor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counsel? Uh, if not, you know, I, I'd be curious to know what the residents on Dawn think. And it's been a while. Um, I know I've, I've spoken with residents on Dawn that don't want it paved for that particular reason because they don't want it to be a cut-through.
Exactly.
And and I'm not sure that it should be a cut-through. I mean, I'm guilty. I've done it before, but um, I don't, I'm, I'd do it a lot more if it was nice and smooth. So I don't know. I've, I'm of two minds. I think that they should control their own destiny if they want, if they want it, let them have it. You know, I, I thought, it's been eight or nine years or however long since we did uh Nate Gardner. Gardner and that was a, you know, for my, in my opinion, it was a bit of a fiasco. Um, so I, I don't want to force it on them unless they want it. Uh, so that's how I feel. But with that said, um, we're going to adjourn into closed session on uh the affirmative vote of the council unless anybody else has anything to say at this point.
Make a motion?
So Ms., uh, yeah, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session. So, yeah, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, Ms. Barr. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yanis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ziarco?
Yes.